Good morning and welcome to the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for July 21st, 2016. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. At this time, we'd also like to ask if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. Items one through seven have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Unfortunately, my items on this are not right numbers. Are there any that we are making the final decision So there are no items that the planning commission's actions are final on unless appealed? Are there any items one through seven that the staff would like removed from the consent calendar for separate consideration?
Item number two, please.
Any items one through nine that the planning commission would like removed? And any items, sorry, nine, one through seven, one through seven, any other items that the audience would like removed? Seeing none, chair would entertain a motions for items one through seven excluding item Jan made the motion to approve items one through seven excluding item two per staff recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two.
Thank you. Good morning. Item number two is 16RZ021, a request to rezone property from medium density residential district to office commercial district. This is on approximately 0.4 acres of property located southeast of the intersection of Haynes Street and Anamosa Street. The Black Hills Crisis Pregnancy Center is current property of those two properties, currently developed with two single-family residences. The property owner is proposing to rezone that to develop the medical clinic and offices for the Black Hills Crisis Pregnancy Center. The reason we pulled this today is we did receive a letter in opposition to the request from neighboring property owners. I'll run you through some slides quick so that you have an idea of this and you can take a look at the letter in opposition that's on the dais. Property is currently zoned medium density residential district. As you can see, property in the north, it's kind of an area transitioning between commercial uses and residential uses to the south. I should note, though, that this area that's currently zoned low-density residential district is actually developed with church. So we do have a mix of low-intensity commercial residential uses in that area. Air view of the property, it is developed with two single-family residences. To my knowledge, based on site visits, those properties are vacant today and their accessory structures. Future land use plan shows properties appropriate for urban neighborhood. Light use commercial districts can be considered appropriate in the urban neighborhood land use designation if they're in a transitional area between commercial and residential uses and for uses that are primarily serving the neighborhood. In this instance, we believe this rezone meets with those requirements, the comprehensive plan on the specific property. We should note, however, that in the future, if additional rezone requests south of this are requested, that may not be appropriate. And we'll have to take a look at those on a case-by-case basis at that time. The property is located at the intersection of two principal arterial streets. One of the reasons that we see this appropriate for some types of light commercial uses is it transitions to residential uses to the south. Transportation planning noted that this location is on four separate bus routes and has good access to alternative forms of transportation if necessary. So look at the property with the sign posted. The single-family residences on the property today are in the greatest condition. This is a look at the property further south. I'll look at Haynes Avenue looking south. Most of you are aware, the neighborhood is developing or is primarily residential south of this intersection and primarily commercial north of this intersection, as this photograph shows here. Moving to the west along Anamosa, we've got another church developed further up the hill from the strip mall on the corner. And then Anamosa Street to the east, we've got the church on the north side and residential primarily extending after that. I'll look at the church itself and the strip mall on the northwest corner of the intersection, as well as a utility substation located on the southwest corner of the intersection. So definitely transitional area. Additional look at the state of the properties today. I'll look from the alleyway. The letter in opposition that you'll note on the dais says that we're worried about traffic in the alleyway and residential use of the alleyway today. There are two access points located on the property today. And this is the time I should inform you that the applicant has submitted a plan development designation in association with this request. So any redevelopment of this property with offices or any type of commercial use will require that a final plan development be approved. So you will have an opportunity to see what development does come in here. The access to this property and the use of the alleyway would be considered as a part of that. We should also note that based on the zoning district, there would be screening required to be provided along any property boundaries that were adjacent to residential districts or uses. So we'll be looking forward to seeing the final plan development coming in in the future. Another look at the alley and the existing condition of the property today. Based on the transitional nature of this property, its location between a commercial and residential district, we feel that the move from medium-density residential district to office commercial district would allow for that mix of uses to provide a better transitional area between the commercial and the residential uses, and it would also allow for the redevelopment of some properties that are currently struggling today. We do have some representatives here from Black Hills Crisis Pregnancy Center to answer any questions that she might have. And staff is recommending that this application be approved with the associated plan development designation.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions or comments from the planning commission?
Thank you, Rob, for the presentation. I'm always hesitant about changing residential into more commercial use. And I know years ago, when Haynes Avenue was redone, and a lot of people were concerned that the whole strip would go into commercial use of some kind. And so far, it hasn't. I mean, we've had residential properties there the whole time. But that particular property sits way up on top of a hill, and it's a difficult place to have a residence, I think. I mean, that's just my personal thought. And so I think changing this to an office commercial use would be appropriate because you could still have residential if they so choose. But I guess my question is, how, I've never been to the office of the Crisis Center, don't need it. And my guess is, I'm trying to think, how many people would come? I mean, is that a real heavily-used office?
I would defer to the representatives from the Crisis Pregnancy Center, and they're available to speak.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Wolman, and I'm the CEO of CareNet Pregnancy Research Center, Black Hills Crisis Pregnancy Center. And thank you for your time. We've been in the community for 31 years, and sometimes we get teased with the best-known secret in the community. We serve families, about 200 families a year. We have about 100 and 130 pregnancy tests, gals that come in wanting to know if they're pregnant or not. We provide ultrasounds, free pregnancy tests, resources in parenting, referrals for housing in our community. We provide a lot of needs and a lot of networking needs, have for 31 years. I've been there 12 years as the director. And we're really excited. For 31 years, we've had to pay rent in this community, and we've had to transition two or three, probably four different places within the last 12 years, just to try to find economical offices to rent so that we can continue operating, providing our free services. We're funded, we're a nonprofit organization funded by generous donations of compassionate people in this community. We don't take any government funds, no United Way funds, mostly individuals, businesses, and churches. Have a couple fundraisers a year. Right now, our annual budget's about $200,000 a year. So you can see that rent is significant a part of our expense. We have one full-time employee, that's me, a nurse manager part-time, operations manager part-time, and a part-time program assistant. The rest are volunteers. Our primary hours are from about eight to five, Monday through Friday. And so it's definitely a significant need. We're excited about the visibility and the accessibility to provide for our clients. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That answers my question, I guess. And I think once, if this is approved and you come forward with your plan development, we'll look closely at how you would impact the neighborhood. But I think it seems to be an appropriate use of that property, so...
And may I add one more thing? Our heart is to keep it community-focused. And anything that we do to our building, it would make it look still neighborhood-friendly and community.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vicky?
Just a reminder that the request before you today is to rezone this property to office commercial, and there's no specific use attached to that. And any use identified in office commercial could come forward. That's in particular why, as staff, we wanted this to be a part of a plan development, so that whatever that use may be, you and the neighborhood would have an opportunity to visit about that and ensure that the issues for that neighborhood are being addressed.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Galen made the motion to approve. Karen seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we're at item eight.
Thank you. Item number eight is 16PD032, a final plan development to overlay to allow expansion of existing financial institution and to provide additional parking. This is for the Black Hills Federal Credit Union, currently located on North Plaza Drive. They are proposing total 199, and I shouldn't specify because my staff report, according to the representatives, was a little incorrect. Instead of 182,000 square foot expansion, it's 182,000 square foot total of the building. So the expansion would bring the total of square footage of the structure up to 182,000. And they are proposing expansion on 8.09 acres of property, currently zoned light industrial district. As a part of this, the applicant is requesting three exceptions. The first is reduction in parking, excuse me, a reduction in parking. The second is a reduction in the required parking aisle width. And the third would be an increase in the permitted height of the building. I'll get into each of those specifically in greater detail here in a moment. Let me take you through some slides. So it's noted, the property is currently zoned light industrial district. The general agriculture district on all three sides of the property, or four sides of the property, is actually part of the golf course in the area, and Interstate 90th located to the north. Air view of the property today. To give you a sense of what's happening, you'll see in the site plans, the expansion is proposed on the north side of the building. It's going to be located in there. They're also reconfiguring their parking and providing alternative layout to their drive-through services that they provide today. Future land use shows the property is appropriate for light industrial uses, and a financial institution is considered a permitted use in the light industrial district. North Plaza Drive is on arterial street, of course Interstate 90, gateway to the community. Maybe I'll stop coughing here. Here's a look at what they're proposing to do, as I noted before. Here's the proposed expansion. The important thing to note here is they are proposing 70 parking spaces to be located underground underneath the proposed expansion. You'll see in some site photos right now that they've started digging on that. The other thing to note is, you'll see that the existing drive-through services are kind of located in this area. They're actually now moving those south, closer to the property line, but will provide kind of a separate area for the drive-through services that won't be impacting the parking and the rest of the lot as much. Kind of another paving, a striping layout of the site. This is a look at the underground parking that's proposed. As I noted, 71 spaces. They do comply with all the requirements of Rapid City Municipal Code. And so these are in addition to the required, or these are supplemental to the required parking. As a part of the application, a total of 438 parking spaces would be required based on the size of the expansion. However, based on the understanding of the nature of the use and the types of uses that would be going on, the applicant has requested a reduction in parking from 438 spaces to 352 spaces. This will, as I noted, include these 70 parking spaces located underground. The applicant, Black Hills Federal Credit Union, is a well-established member of the community. They are aware of their parking requirements for these needs, and have noted that 352 parking spaces should well suffice their parking However, on the exterior of the lot, the applicant has noted that previously, when Black Hills Federal Credit Union first located on this site, they did receive a variance to reduce the required parking aisle width from 26 feet to 24 feet. In order to maintain the design of the site, they're requesting that that variance be carried over into an exception request as a part of this final plan development. So they have designed the parking to allow 24-foot parking aisles rather than 26 feet. The effect of this would allow them to increase the number of landscaping points that they can provide on the site by providing that extra space, and is in keeping with the character of the development today. I'll look at some of the elevations for the proposed building. This elevation north, this top one here, would be what would be visible from the interstate, Interstate 90. And keep in mind that there is golf course between the interstate and where this building would be situated. And you'll see that, I think, in a moment. The applicant has requested, or an exception, to increase the permitted height of the building from 45 feet to 53 feet, four and three-quarters inches, which would be the height of the building to the top of these HVAC units and elevator shafts at the top here. The top to the standard roof line is actually from 45 feet to 47 feet. So without the HVAC units, it is still an increase in the requested height of the building, but fairly minor. Just a look at the property with the sign posted. They do have erosion, or a grading permit underway. So they are doing some earthwork on the site today. That's what this secondary driveway is. North Plaza Drive looking to the west, and North Plaza Drive looking to the east. You can note, there's abundant green space in the area. It's part of that is their property and landscaping that currently exists today. Green space is very important to them, as well as the golf course located around the development. This is a look at their existing drive-through services as they exist today. As we noted, those are going to be moved to the south of the lot. Right now, these are kind of right square in the middle of the parking lot, if you're familiar with the site. And so we'll be able to provide additional and clearer parking separate from the drive-through services. What this shot is actually showing is where those drive-through services would be located at. So you can see that structure located on the left here screen. And that'll actually, those services will actually be moving through this driveline in the rear, and the services will be right there. So just a readjustment of the existing layout. Additional parking on the site. And I was able to climb a landscaping island and reach over a fence and take a quick shot of the dirt work that's currently going on today. You can see, there's a fence there on the right side of your screen. That would be the boundary to the golf course, and then the interstate's actually beyond that. So they are providing quite a bit of space between, a separation between the interstate and the proposed building expansion. I should note, as a part of this application, they are requesting one LED sign. Black Hills Federal Credit Union typically does include an LED message center as part of all of their developments. We recently approved one as a part of their downtown relocation. The proposed sign will meet all requirements of the Rapid City Municipal Code, maximum 60 square foot per side. You can see what's there existing today. It will be much, or the new sign will be very similar, if not identical, to this. And one more shot of the front of the building, where they will be doing some additional work on their entryway. Based on the unique use of this facility and the established use pattern that the Black Hills Federal Credit Union is aware of, it appears that the proposed reductions of parking and the alternative parking layout will suffice to provide the necessary parking for the site. Circulation for the site will be improved due to the relocated drive-through services. And it appears that the requested increase in the height of the building will not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. With that, staff is recommending that this application be approved, with the stipulations noted in the staff report. And we do have several members of Black Hills Federal Credit Union and their representatives here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate you going the extra mile for that construction photo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On first look, it looks like a total of 440 parking spaces is light for 181,000 square foot building in comparison. I know of another 200,000 square foot building that has 1,030. So when I look at the project report, I see that 46,567 square feet is designated as storage and mechanical. Is that always going to be storage and mechanical? Because if half of that gets built out in the future, that's an additional 100 spaces that would be required. If it's all built out, it's another additional 100. I don't really have an issue with the reduction. It's just that are we looking long-term in how that space is being utilized, and how are they going to plan for future phases? Because I would make the assumption that that's future-built-out space. So that's my question.
I would defer to Ian McCain from Lamaki Group to discuss future plans for the use of the building.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Absolutely. Ian McCain with Lamaki Group, representing Black Hills Federal Credit Union this morning. To answer your question, that is currently a designation of the amount of space that will be proposed to be built out today. But in determining the quantity of parking stalls we're proposing to you, we do believe that the quantity of stalls will fulfill their needs of a full buildout upon that completion of the building. We do credit union facilities coast-to-coast. This is all we do. I have a general rule of thumb, about 300 to 350 square feet per person as an occupant within a building of ours. If you were to take the 180,000 roughly square feet, subtract the lower-level parking, subtract walls and circulation space, we're right there. So while your staff report does note 40 or so thousand square feet for storage, I believe long-term they'll be satisfied with the stalls we're proposing.
Thanks for that response. Normally, if that space would be built out, there would be a phasing plan. Seems light, based upon what I've seen this commission do in other
Karen?
I just want, on record, that I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion and the vote.
John?
Did I read in the report, since I don't have a computer this morning, thank you, that there was a waiver for sidewalks?
To my recollection, I did not include that in the report. They would be required to provide sidewalks when they, as a part of their building permit, when they reply for that. If they believe that they should not need to provide those sidewalks, they would need to take that request to city council as an exception.
Then, the reason I bring that up is, and I thought I read that in the report before I came today, so it's an interesting part of the community out there. That neighborhood has residential down the road, children, as well as the industrial aspect of that neighborhood. And there are people out there walking around, doing exercising, and this is a major piece of property in that, adjacent to very busy streets. So I would hope that the building permit requires sidewalks. And I know there aren't adjacent properties with them, but we require that in development. So I'd like to see that going forward. The second thing with regard to the answer on the parking spaces. I appreciate your rule of thumb and that that's what your company does, but I think we need to take a look at any variance in parking spaces based on our ordinances, which were developed in conjunction with this community planning and our comprehensive planning. So I share the concern about the parking and the buildout. And the reason that I have the reduction concerns is the narrowness of the aisle. Cars and pickups and trucks are getting bigger. I drive one. A 24-foot aisle is pretty narrow. So I guess probably I'm going to have a little bit of a problem with that reduction. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to the aisle width. To your point, there is enough width on that site to handle 26-foot aisles. The credit union, when they first moved out to Plaza Drive, placed a large and strong value upon the green space that's visible and immediately surrounding them. In addition, they've put in a lot of time and cash investing in new plantings, new landscaping, as part of that vision of the green space around their building. We're proposing the reduction to support that. So to your point, 24 feet is there currently. They have had no issues on their site, but the value is more so that the space and looking to feel around their building is supported by their initiatives for planting and landscaping.
Thank you. John, anything further? Vicky?
Just wanted the applicant to be made aware that the area that they've identified as storage and mechanical, it being over 40,000 square feet, that if there is any reuse of that area in the future, they will have to come back before our department to identify what that use is. And if it does trigger additional parking, which of course it would be on storage, then that's going to require yet another exception to the parking requirement. As John pointed out, the 300 square foot per employee is not a ratio that's within our parking regulations. So any future phases of expansion may be back before the planning commission in the future.
Correct. And just to support that, that's something that credit union is well aware of, to be clear. We have spoken at length with them about future plans. We know that the parking we're proposing supports their needs for the next 10 to 15 years. But in addition, once we move past that, they will need to approach the team again on how we occupy that space in support of the parking.
Thank you. Linda?
As most of people know, I'm a strong advocate for sidewalks. And I just want to pat John on the back for expressing that concern, because that's always a major concern of mine for the safety of families. And I think it's a health issue, too.
Thank you. Andy?
Just to sum up the parking issue, I don't have any problem with the reduction. I guess I just want to make sure that when they do build out half, or whatever that is, now you're talking not a 20% reduction, you're talking a 40 or 60% reduction. That's where the problem's going to come. So if Vicky or staff is comfortable that the fact of when that space gets built out properly and they file a building permit, then that there's space for them to really do the parking. And so if that's the course of action, and we can make sure that that happens in the future, I'm fine with the reduction. But we just, if that's what the count is, that's what the count is. But I don't feel, I feel we have to stay consistent across the board with various different businesses and what we do. And so with that, I'm good. I'd like to make a motion to approve with a stipulation that sidewalk be required at building permit along the frontage of North Plaza Drive.
Andy made the motion. John seconded the motion to approve with the stipulations, including a stipulation that sidewalk is required at building permit along North Plaza Drive? Plaza Drive? North Plaza. Vicky, does that motion make sense?
I'm going to need you to repeat it one more time. I was a little confused by it.
The motion was made to approve per staff recommendations with the additional stipulation that sidewalk be required at the time of building permit to be shown along North Plaza Drive.
It doesn't hurt. It would require a variance from council to waive the requirement. It would require a variance from council to waive the requirement, and that item's not become before council. But certainly, if the intent of the Planning Commission is to approve this contingent upon a sidewalk being provided, then you can add that as a stipulation.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number nine is sixteen UR seventeen. This is a conditional use permit to allow on-sale liquor in conjunction with the restaurant at the strip mall located west of Haynes Avenue and south of Disk Drive. It is the current location of the Lentz Brothers Pizza. They have one suite within the strip mall. They have been there for some time now. Their suite is twenty-six hundred square feet. They are open seven days a week from seven AM to ten PM, and they would like to serve beer and wine with their pizza. And with that, I'll show you some slides. The property is currently zoned general commercial. An aerial of the property, you see the strip mall, they've got parking both to the north and the south of the building. The main entrance is on the south side. That is, I believe it's Petco that you see to the southwest and Kohl's to the southeast. The future land use plan shows this as a mixed-use commercial. Disk Drive is identified as a collector's street, and you see Haynes Avenue in blue is a principal arterial street. These are areas that support these type of commercial uses. That identifies the suite within the strip mall that is currently the Lentz Brothers Pizza. The existing elevations of the building, and it really is a good-looking building. This is looking west along Disk Drive, to the east back towards Haynes. Looking into the site, that's the entry aisle that you take off of Disk. The backside of the building, the front of the building, you can see their sign at their entrance door, and sufficient parking for all of the uses exists within the three lots. It is PetSmart that's there, and Kohl's. We've reviewed this in, based on the criteria for an on-sale liquor, and it meets all of the separation needs for that use. In addition, we've looked at it as a conditional use to ensure that any nuisances that would be created by this are mitigated to the best of its ability so that the neighborhood doesn't suffer from this use. And certainly, it meets all those requirements, too. This is on non-consent because it is on-sale liquor, and you've requested that we bring these to you and point them out. This is being approved in conjunction with the restaurant. Any expansion of use would require a major amendment, and we'd bring that back before you. So with that, we are recommending to approve with the one stipulation that any expansion require a major amendment. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Vicki. Any questions from the commission? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion. Karen made the motion to approve. Jan seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten.
Good morning. Item number ten is review of the draft downtown area master plan. At this time, we'd like to ask the Planning Commission to consider amending the action which is listed on the agenda currently as to approve the draft plan. If we could just change that to acknowledge the draft plan. We are entering into the public review phase of this planning process. We have three open houses scheduled, one for later this afternoon, and then two next week. And so we'd just like to make it clear that the draft is out for public review, and we'll be bringing the final plan back forward early fall. This is a project we've been working on for about a year. I have two members from our consulting team, J.J. Folsom with Puma and Graham Smith with Gould Evans, and they're going to give an overview of the recommendations that are in the plan, and will be available for questions and discussion following.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Whoops. What we got going here? Okay, thank you, Planning Commission. I'm happy to be here. As Sarah mentioned, we have been working on this project for about a year now. It's been incredible.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, again, so my name is J.J. Folsom. I'm an urban designer and planner from Denver, Colorado. Our firm name is Puma, Progressive Urban Management Associates. Again, we've been working on this project for over a year now, or about a year. We've worked with several of you, have been involved throughout our process. So we're very excited to be wrapping this project up and feel like we're providing the City of Rapid City an incredible document and concrete recommendations that we're briefly going to go through with you. You all have copies of this document. It is about a hundred-page document, so we're going to try to summarize a year-long process in a hundred-page document in about fifteen or twenty minutes here so we can leave ample time for questions about the document. So just briefly going through how the document is set up, we have an extensive piece where we describe all your previous plans, and we give recommendations from those existing plans on what the city should move forward with. We have a robust market assessment, a summary of what the market is in Rapid City for all uses, residential, commercial, industrial, throughout downtown. We did a robust community engagement summary, or a robust community engagement, and in this document, we summarized that. And then the meat of the document, which my colleague Graham will be talking about, are the actual framework recommendations of the plan. So the physical recommendations, street improvements, bicycle improvements, pedestrian improvements. And then we have, in the end of the document, an action plan and implementation recommendations. The study area here is, is this one on too? This one's a little more clear. Basically, it's the Civic Center to the north. Oh, yeah, thank you. There's a little pen here. I'll just draw it on here because it's actually going to be easier to see. Civic Center to the north roughly follows Omaha, and then down to the east includes the entire SD Mines campus, kind of follows the foothills to the south, and then West Boulevard on the west. So that's generally the study area. What I've been saying throughout this year-long process is that about eighty percent of our effort focuses on within that red line, but you know, you can't draw a concrete boundary when you have uses that need to be part of the plan. So with that said, you know, we're actually looking at, you know, including this area, which is the Journey Museum, and then a really important river and potential trail connection, which we'll get into in a few minutes here. That's generally the study area. Whoa. Haven't played the John Madden game in a long time, so. So briefly, talk about the market assessment. So in that market assessment, these are the highlights that we see within the next five years or so, there's a really strong demand for multifamily housing downtown. A lot of people want to live down here if the housing products were available. Affordable and creative office spaces, spaces similar to the garage. They're currently building, there's another project adjacent to the garage that, just east of that, so that's a demand. Also, job growth in the next five years. We see potential demand of up to two hundred thousand square feet of additional commercial space within that boundary I just drew. There's also a little bit of a market for a boutique hotel. You have a lot of higher-end, larger hotels, but maybe a smaller four-star hotel could be built in the next five years. And then some retail market opportunities in downtown. You already have a robust downtown with restaurants, but there could be more. Specialty foods, books, music, small electronics, health product store, those kind of uses. And then finally, the public realm investments can really strengthen all of these uses, and Graham will talk more about the details on that. So as I mentioned, very robust community engagement. Your community is very passionate about this project, as are we. We had over seventeen hundred stakeholders participate. A hundred-plus participants that we interviewed, we had working groups based on a variety of topics. Over one thousand four hundred people responded to our online survey that was up for several months last winter. And then we had over two hundred people attend our open houses. So it's been a really, really great process and really transparent process for the community. So out of that process, the community's top priorities for downtown improvements were arts and culture, safety, housing, connectivity, that meaning bike, pedestrian, and automobile connectivity, employment, parking, looking at key streets, a mix of uses, and then also linking SD Mines, not just physically but culturally, and looking at job opportunities. And then the core values that we took all those, sorry, let me just go back one, took all these community top priorities and put those into what we're calling the core values of the town. So these five values, making downtown livable, prosperous, active, welcoming, and connected, which you have today, and basically just building upon all of that. So those are the values of this town, or the values of the city and the plan. So now I'm going to have Graham talk briefly about the framework, and then I'm going to come back and talk about some of the implementation ideas in the action plan.
Thanks, J.J. Welcome.
Good morning. My name's Graham Smith. I'm with Gould Evans. We're a planning and architecture firm out of Kansas City, and we've been working side-by-side with J.J. and Sarah and the community on this project. As J.J. said, I want to spend a few minutes going through some of the physical improvements or recommendations to downtown that we've identified in the plan. To set up how we've structured this section of the plan, we've identified two basic frameworks, and what we wanted to get at was not only addressing the things the city should do on the public side, and that's the public framework, but also on the private development side. So as property develops, what are the things that are important to get out of those developments that will help continue to shape downtown? And so within each one of those frameworks, we came up with some guiding principles. On the development side, it's districts, and I'll get into each one of these in some specifics here in a minute. On the public side, it's all about connectivity, as J.J. said, connecting the community with bikes, pedestrians, and automobiles, and transit is in that as well, and then public spaces in the downtown. And I'll just say right now that you guys have one of the best public spaces in the Midwest, maybe in the country, in your downtown already, and so building off of that success is what that's all about. And then finally, at the, kind of the most focused level, the strategies that we've identified to implement some of these things. And the frameworks and the principles are very important to this overall, how'd you advance this? To this overall discussion because the principles, the frameworks and principles really allow you all as a body, and citizens, and developers, and property owners, to make daily decisions about what they want to do with their property in light, or in the absence of a specific recommendation. So where we're not making a specific strategy or action recommendation, these frameworks will help you guide your decision-making. So at the highest level, the development framework, again, dealing with the private development, what we've identified is a series of two different districts within downtown. One is the historic core centered around Main Street Square, the historic core of the downtown, and how that has developed over time. And then the other is what we're calling, what people in the community currently call the east of Fifth Street District. We've somewhat relabeled that into the Innovation District and drawn in the SD Mines Campus into that. We started looking at a couple of different districts out there, but really, when you look at them, they're trying to achieve a lot of the same things. And what the districts do for us is help us define the character of those two areas. And as we move through these strategies and recommendations, and then we'll talk about design guidelines, you'll see how the character plays an important role. The two primary development strategies that we've identified in the plan, one is called creating place types. And so this really has to do with the use and form of development within your community. And so divided by those districts or identified with those districts, we've looked at activity centers, which are areas like Main Street Square and the heart of the historic core there with the Alex Johnson Prairie Edge and those types of uses in that area, and recreating or creating activity centers in the rest of downtown, in that innovation area. And that's where the work really starts to begin because those aren't there on the ground right now, but we think they're important as destinations for people to be drawn towards. And then there's downtown area, which is a little bit less intense, a little more relaxed, different uses. And so those place types are really important as we look at the market for downtown and how we position development throughout downtown. To get even more specific, we've identified a series of development sites. We think one of the most critical development sites that you have in your downtown right now is the municipal parking lot between Fifth and Sixth along St. Joe. We think that's a critical piece to extend the activity center that is Main Street Square area, the historic core area. And so we took the liberties, I guess, of drawing what something along the, on that site might look like. Again, trying to identify, trying to follow the concepts and recommendations within the plan for development and design, this is something that would be completely appropriate on this site, in this area. And similarly, as I said, one of the key strategies is the development of activity centers. And looking in that Innovation District and between Fifth Street and the School of Mines, how do we start to create some of those things? And applying those same kind of strategies, creating an activity center there that really starts to attract people to that area, creates an intensity of development and activity that makes it multi-use and multifunctional for a lot of different people to use. That was the development side or the private property side. On the flip side of that, there's the public framework. And again, these are those public improvements that we think are necessary to not only support development, but to also create the value in downtown that people will see so that they will invest in the area. And these primarily are focused on connectivity in the public spaces. And with the connectivity, we've identified a series of strategies listed here, and the primary one that we think is most important is the identification of different street types. Whether pedestrian streets, bike streets, or auto streets, the implementation of those strategies really looks at prioritizing those modes of transportation for those different types of streets. So a perfect example is a recommendation in the plan is that Main and St. Joe become pedestrian streets. And so a specific recommendation is to narrow the three-lane, one-way pair there with Main and St. Joe to a two-lane section with a bike-bus lane on one side, maintain the angle parking, improve the streetscape along there, and really make it more pedestrian-friendly and comfortable for use. Not just by accident, those pedestrian streets also connect to the areas that we think are most appropriate for the activity center. So as we're getting more people engaged in downtown and connecting throughout downtown, we think that's an important recommendation. A cycle street, another great example, would be Kansas City. Kansas City Street connects the School of Mines, the SD Mines Campus, all the way up to Dinosaur Hill. We think that's a great connection for an on-street bike route. And so that bike street, there's sections in the plan that identify those improvements. And then trails, obviously automobiles. It's about prioritizing the automobile, but not forgetting the other modes. And then finally, public spaces, as I mentioned earlier, you guys have a great example of a public space in your downtown. We're not looking to recreate that. What we are looking to do is to create that type of gathering place or amenity for people that are using downtown or living downtown to be able to use in other areas of downtown. And then our final piece, and probably the most specific, is the design guidelines for downtown. These build upon the plan recommendations and some of the things that are already in your zoning ordinance. But what we did is took the opportunity to look at the block and the site design. Our primary intent with the design guidelines was to give some direction with regard to the design of the building and the site, but also build in flexibility for people to bring forward different ideas and different projects and see how they fit within the downtown character. So we gave recommendations for things like building mass and site access and onsite parking, if that's required at all in some areas, building materials. And then we broke each section down by the districts and gave them specific character areas, specifically looking at the design elements of buildings in particular and materials. And then finally, setting up the structure, there's a recommendation for setting up a structure to administer the design guidelines. And I'll turn it back over to J.J. And then we broke each section down by those, by the districts and gave them specific character areas, specifically looking at the design elements of buildings in particular and those, and materials. And then finally, setting up the structure, there's a recommendation for setting up a structure to administer the design guidelines. And I'll turn it back over to JJ.
Thank you, Graham. So just a few more slides here. So talking about, a lot of ideas were presented there just briefly by Graham, and so the question is, how, how do we implement these? So the, the, the end of this document provides what we're calling the action plan and then some implementation ideas. So we've boiled all these ideas down into three big topics: economy, experience and environment. And under each of those, we, we took those, the community's top priorities. So providing housing everywhere, meaning variety of housing, variety of housing types in, in downtown, creating new innovative spaces or retrofitting existing buildings to provide new jobs downtown, and again, the SD Mines linkages, linking it both physically as well as culturally and, and economically. And then under the experience category, looking at arts and cultures, arts and culture, parking management and creating a safe and clean downtown. And then in the environment section of the action plan, that's the physical components that Graham talked about, looking at those key streets, key connections, gateways into downtown. One of the things we noticed when we first came to Rapid City a year ago, as you're driving down Omaha or, or on the interstate, you have no idea as a visitor that you have this incredible amenity in downtown. So looking at opportunities for visitors passing through to direct you into downtown and creating those gateways into downtown. And then, of course, looking at zoning, zoning and land use. There's a whole section in the, in the appendix of this plan with, with zoning recommendations to improve your, your current zoning and be able to get these types of uses in downtown. So with, without going into too much detail, each, each section of the action plan provide, and you have this, this, you know, hundred-page document, it provides very specific details, but I'm just going to give the, kind of the overview. So with the housing everywhere, trying to encourage development of new housing and looking at a variety of price points from, you know, from workforce housing, affordable, all the way up to, to high-end housing in downtown. We've heard from a lot of people throughout our interviews, particularly with, with SD Mines and some of your larger employers, difficulty in attracting the brightest and best talent in the country to Rapid City because you don't have those, those, those higher-end homes and, and, and/or condominium or apartment-type units in downtown. So again, looking for up to three hundred and fifty units, a variety of units in downtown over the next five years. In the jobs and innovation, I touched on this briefly, Graham mentioned it, looking at opportunities east of Fifth, there's a lot of, a lot of great buildings, there's also a lot of land in that area that could be used to create these innovative and maker spaces, more creative type, type workspaces. That is the trend today in nationwide, and we work all over the country, and we're seeing this everywhere. And this positions downtown, provides that variety of creating, you know, you're already a regional center, but it positions it to become more of a regional center for innovation and entrepreneurship and attracting those students, that bright talent you have at SD Mines and keeping them in town, so they're not just getting educated here and moving elsewhere. And that, that leads to the SD Mines and linkages. I've mentioned it several times, not just looking at the physical linkages, which are very important, those bike connections, the pedestrian connections between the campus and downtown, but also looking at the economic development potential and the programming. You already have a, a business incubator on, on campus in our meetings with SD Mines and, and a variety of stakeholders, looking at other opportunities where we can expand that, that type of use and, and keep those students here after they graduate. Under the experience portion of, of the action plan, so arts and culture, you, you have an incredible arts and culture program here today. We want to expand that and really, really position downtown as, as the center of arts and culture and, and in the entire region. And parking management, so we've talked a lot about this over the last year, parking always, always is highly discussed through any of our downtown plans, but looking at how your parking today is managed. It's, it's, it's a little backwards from most cities where you have free on-street parking in, in your core of downtown, and then you get a couple blocks off the core and you, and you have meters. It's kind of a, kind of a backwards system. So what, what we recommend, and we, we hate doing this in a plan, recommending another study, but you, you have a parking study, and there's some, there are some good elements out of that, that previous parking study. Take some of those ideas and, and implement them. So looking at opportunities for, for that turnover in downtown, so you don't have people, you know, a lot of times we see the employees are parked in front of, in front of the stores and restaurants. So looking at how to, how to better manage your parking. And then a very important element is creating or maintaining a safe and clean downtown. So having a, a very good visitor experience for folks by having a, a safe and clean downtown. So looking at lighting, you have an incredible lighting plan, so we're recommending that you revisit that and, and implement that lighting plan as part of, part of this experience section. And then finally, in the, in the environment section, again, looking at those key streets and making improvements. Graham talked about pedestrian streets, and by pedestrian streets, he's not saying take all, take cars off the streets. What we're talking about is creating a multimodal experience for bikes, pedestrians and vehicles. And wayfinding, so you have incredible amenities in downtown but also surrounding your downtown with the Rapid Creek, the Skyline Park, the Hanson Larson Trails, providing wayfinding signage so visitors and residents alike know how to get to those, those great amenities that are walking and biking distance to downtown. And by making all these improvements, it will help attract investment and economic development into downtown, particularly east of Fifth Street. Connections and gateways, I talked a little bit about that. So enhancing your, your, your biking and walking. Today, you, you have some good bike facilities in downtown. We're, we're building upon what you have and proposing to, to extend those, making connections into the surrounding neighborhoods to the south and the west, and also providing additional connections across Omaha like you have at Sixth to get to, to Rushmore Civic Center as well as to the Journey Museum, making those enhancements or, or making better enhanced intersections of Omaha, which is a very difficult street to cross. And then finally, land use and zoning, so revising the zoning code east of Fifth to make it much easier to attract and build, build new housing, build these innovative job spaces. What, what we've been looking at in your zoning code is east, east of Fifth, it's a little more difficult to do more compact urban-type development because the, the zoning standards in that area are more, what we would call more suburban, they have higher parking requirements, higher setbacks, landscape, and, and there's a whole section in the appendix of this document that goes into the details of that, and we've been working very closely with staff on, on all of those components. So that was a lot. So we've talked about a lot of big ideas here, but we don't want to just leave you with expensive, long-term ideas. So some of what we think are the quick wins of this project, so in the economy section, one of the biggest ones we think is, is to pilot a tax abatement program to, to kickstart that housing in downtown. Right now, you don't have a proven project in downtown, so investors are hesitant to, to provide loans to build housing in downtown because there's no, there's no comparables. So if there were, if there were a way or a short-term incentive, you know, maybe three to five years where you can provide this, a tax abatement to attract that first or second project to get built in downtown, then more will follow and you eliminate the, the tax abatement program. Also revising the downtown zoning and land use policies. That's something that is not expensive to do. It, it does take time, but that can be done internally, so that's a, a quick win. Looking at economic incentives with SD Mines, how, how can the two work together right now? Right now, they both kind of downtown and, and School of Mines work in sort of a vacuum. How can we bring the two of those together to really expand the, the economic value of, of both, both downtown and the mines? And also creating new downtown, you have a lot of events going on in downtown, which are great, but they, not many of them combine SD Mines. So how can we provide or create new events in downtown that are more SD Mines-focused? So for instance, homecoming events, have those in downtown and, and attract the students and, and staff and faculty to, to the core of downtown. So these are all economic quick wins. In the experience one, I, I mentioned it already, implement the downtown lighting plan. You have a great lighting plan, this will help tremendously with attracting new investment in downtown, making that clean and safe neighborhood in downtown. Updating your two thousand seven market or, or your parking management and, and implement some of the components of that study. Promoting live workspace for artists east of Fifth. You have an incredible art community, let's build upon that and add more housing and more affordable-type housing for artists to, to bring them into downtown. And then finally, quick wins in the environment section, installing more bike racks throughout downtown. Encourage people to get out of their cars. You have, you, you basically have a flat downtown, it's very easy to bicycle most of the year, except when it's a hundred and five degrees or, or twenty degrees. But, you know, nine months out of the year, it's very, very easy and conducive to ride bikes throughout downtown. So install more bike racks so people have places to secure their bikes. Also, mentioned this previously, new wayfinding to connect to these incredible amenities. This would be a very quick win, could, could be done in-house through Public Works and Transportation, creating signage so people know how to get to your, to your incredible mountain parks and your, and your trails. And then Graham talked about this, this reducing lanes on, on Main and St. Joe from three to two. We recommend that you do a demonstration project first to make sure that people understand how this works. Does it really work? This is something that can be done. I've done it in other communities throughout the country where we spend a weekend and literally just cans of paint and, and do a mock, mock demonstration of what this would look like. We, we recommend doing more than that for this, you know, maybe it's a two- or three-month demonstration project somewhere on the east side of, east of Fifth to, to see how this could really work and show people how bike lanes, how pedestrian improvements and, and the parking could, could work. So that's a short-term recommendation. And then as part of those wayfinding signs, adding distances and times on them. So if you have a sign at Main Street Square that says seven-minute walk to Hanson Larson Trails, or a three-minute bike ride, and, and you have these signs along the way that tell you, or from Main Street Square, ten to twelve-minute walk to SD Mines versus just a sign that says SD Mines, one mile. Give people an indication of how, how far and, and how much time things take to get to. Your, your downtown is very compact. I've walked between SD Mines and downtown several times. It's, it's a ten to fifteen-minute walk, depending on your walk speed. So again, those are some, some quick wins as, as part of this plan that we think you, you should implement. And then I'm not going to go into the details on this, but this is just how, how do we implement all of these ideas? So the city, destination Rapid City, the bid, all need to be aligned on, on these, and we've provided a, a series of recommendations in the plan for that. Parking revenue could actually be used to implement capital improvements, so all of these streetscape ideas and pedestrian connections and bike improvements that we're talking about, parking revenue could help pay for that, and that could either be through the bid or through downtown. And then rearranging your, your capital improvement program, rearranging those priorities to focus on downtown. Spent a lot of time and a lot of money on this project, let's, let's be sure to continue that over the next five years. So looking at your, your capital improvements for citywide and maybe rearranging some of those and putting some of the downtown elements, make those rise to the top. Other financing opportunities, tax increment financing should be considered for public space improvements and, and in order to attract new private development and looking at, in order to attract that housing. Again, it's going to be difficult to get the new housing in downtown without proven projects, and, and lenders need, need those, those proven projects. And then the tax abatement program, so just some, some details on that, you know, maybe in the first year there, it's zero percent tax and it, it goes up incrementally, so year two, twenty percent, year three, forty percent, so on and so forth. And then potential credit enhancements from your large employers. You have, you know, your, your energy companies, your medical companies, SD Mines, is there potential for them to help, help underwrite some of these projects? Crowdsourcing, we've actually seen this in downtown Denver. We had a, a, a protected bike lane that was completely funded by, by the public. They, they put out a campaign, they, they raised two hundred thousand dollars just from individuals, from the entire community and, and the bike community on getting a project implemented. That's another way to get some of these quick wins. And then, of course, you know, your foundations, your corporate sponsorships, looking for private money to help. There, there's a lot of people and a lot of companies with a lot of money in this town and, and trying to get them to help invest in your downtown, because ultimately it will help them attract the brightest and best employees nationwide, because you're competing with a lot of other downtowns. And then we think, finally, creating this downtown planned coordinating council. So again, you've spent a lot of time and money on this plan, let's not just get another plan on the shelf, let's create a position or, or a council that makes sure these ideas move forward over the next five years. The last thing I want to see when I walk away from, from a community is another plan sitting on the shelf. We want to see things implemented, and that's something our company takes pride in, and that most, most of every project we work on, several elements of that project get implemented within the first couple of years. So we want to really see that, we feel strongly about that. So that was a lot. I know we have a lengthy document in front of you, and we're, we want to answer questions from you, just to give you an idea of the next step. So the, my colleague and partner Brad Siegel will be here next week, talking with Public Works and Legal Finance, and he will also be leading a couple open houses. Graham and I are leading an open house this, in, in an hour from, a couple hours from now at the Journey Museum from ten to one P.M. And then you'll go through, go to city council in August, and we'll make revisions to the document based on your feedback, based on the public feedback we get over the next few weeks. And then the final document submittal in late August, towards the end of the summer, and then we'll come back to you in September, and back to Public Works, back to Legal Finance if everything goes as planned, looking at an adoption this fall. So very excited about this project. It's been one of the most pleasurable communities to work in, and as I mentioned at the beginning, the, the outreach and the passion that your community has about your downtown is, is like, I have not seen that as, as often as I've seen it here. So thank you very much, and now I'd like to open it up, have Graham come up here, and we'll tag team on, I'm, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about some of the ideas in here. Thank you.
Thank you, JJ. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for coming today and the work that you have done with the community. Nice participation rate, good outreach, and it's a great directional document, adds to your comments on the community's value for downtown. So I have a couple of points that, just input, no questions. I noticed in the acknowledgement of previous plans, we did do a, a plan with an organization called Projects for Public Spaces out of New York. I did not see them acknowledge in the program, and much of your design and recommendation for experiential and storefront-type activities are listed in those plans, so I'd like to, I'd like to see that included. That was work that we did in development of downtown. On the funding issue, I agree with everything you have, and thank you for putting that in. It's a great help to our public policymakers and helps the community understand that it's not free. And so I just want to comment that the institution of the Business Improvement District was put in at the initial revitalization efforts downtown. Tax abatement has been something that has gone away in the past, but strangely enough, twenty-five years ago, it was a standard in, in development in the community, it was just too widespread. So your recommendation that a pilot project over a sunsetted period is an excellent recommendation. I would say that instead of going to zero tax, I, I don't know whether the County Commission was part of the group or...
We, we did have meetings with them, and, and yes, they were not all on board with that, to say the least.
So, well, I, I think the community has to be, if, if they truly want this to be developmental for the community, the previous tax abatement froze the level of tax abatement on the property and increased it over five years, four years, I think, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred percent at the end of the fourth year.
Right.
And the idea that maybe a limited number of projects that get done would be a, a great thing if we could do it. The other thing I wanted to ask at the city level, on the building ordinance side, when we did the revitalization downtown earlier, and I'm not familiar with uniform building codes, they get patched together by communities, but isn't there a downtown or historic building code where some of the recommendations that you have, including maybe extending central business district ordinance to east of Fifth into the Innovation District, are, are those key parts of your recommendation? I couldn't find them. I couldn't find them in the document.
Yeah, you want to answer that piece?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure I quite understand your question.
There's a, there's a uniform building code specifically for older downtown.
Historic, historic properties?
Well, I'm not sure that it's specific to historic properties. I'll give you an example, in Billings, Montana, they've adopted that building code, and where an elevator might be required in an older building with over five living spaces upstairs, a stairway is allowed, as long as they're in and out. And so, those kinds of issues that are not found in the usual uniform building.
Yeah, so we deal with a lot of communities that have preservation codes, a lot of them call them, so if it is an older building, then they have to bring them up to typically some sort of minimum life safety standard, but they don't have to, your example of an elevator is a perfect one, where they don't have to bring that up to code, but they have to bring up obviously the life safety issue, the life safety pieces to a bare minimum. We did not address building codes in this document, necessarily the code itself, obviously the design of those buildings and things were more of our focus moving forward. I think that's something we probably could consider adding to that, is the recommendation of some sort of preservation code. We didn't, we didn't necessarily hear that come up routinely, I would say.
Not exactly, not exactly a familiar topic for people outside the planning department.
Yeah, and we did have, I will say, we did have, we engaged quite a few people that had done projects, either rehab projects or new projects, in downtown over the last 10 to 15 years probably. And that wasn't a big issue, I think there was some, there's cost implications with that, and that's maybe what they were getting at more, was the cost implications of bringing it up to code, to the current code, but that's something that we could consider.
Well, the parking issue, as was pointed out in your presentation, is probably the one at the top of mind, but it is indeed the building that will attract investment. So, thank you for that. Also, Mount Rushmore Road is being rebuilt, and in the earlier study that was done, help me, Vicky, the road deal where we had the Great Fountain roundabout at Main and Mount Rushmore Road, that study has some great visuals of how Mount Rushmore should develop as far south, well, it goes all the way south, but with regard to Wilson Park, it's really part of a livable, historic, it's going to be integrated into the development as, when that road is completed, like everything else in this community, there's going to be more commercial and retail on that. And I think that, I presume that that'll be included in what people view as downtown in Rapid City. The parking enterprise fund, as referred to in your document, I don't believe the city exercises that as an enterprise fund, so you may want to clarify that in your writing. If it should be an enterprise fund, maybe that's a part of the solution to the parking. But it's not operated as an enterprise fund in Rapid City. And then the last thing, and I know that you went over it lightly because this is a big thing in Rapid City, reducing Main and St. Joe to two lanes. Quite honestly, the three-lane, short parking spaces right now is one of the biggest detriments to, I think, the experiential part of downtown, and if the experiential piece that is so prominent in your report and your document is going to be helpful, then I think, as a community, we're going to have to deal with that. And I think that is going to help bring the investment and the housing down, because it'll enhance the parking issue on street. So, my comments, I really appreciated the document, appreciated the way that you involved the community in this, and like you, I hope in the next three years, we see some of the actions starting to take place. Thank you.
Great, thank you, John.
Thanks, John. Andy?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. One quick question, when you talk about 350 additional housing units, is it additional or is it total?
Additional to what you have today, so yeah, a total of 350 new units in that study area.
So with that, and I'm not...
In five years.
Just a couple of notes or thought processes to think about as we move forward, not really looking for an answer. You know, one of the, I think that's a great thing, however, part of the houses that, to get to 350, we probably have to demo some existing housing units to achieve that kind of density, just an assumption, maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, maybe.
But I think there's some challenges there with displacement, where do those, those tend to be some of the lower-income housing. So as a community, we have to think about, as we increase that density, where do we replace that lower-income housing with? I think it's a great idea, and I think it should happen and it will happen, just a thought out there. Another...
Could I address that, just for, or after you?
Well, hold on. Yeah, just give me a second.
Sure.
Then one other thing, I think, we don't need to go back and redo the study or anything like that, but maybe as a planning commission and as a planning staff, whatever planning, whatever we adopt in zoning opportunity, I think we should also look at taking that west, from West Boulevard, on the sliver between Omaha and West Main to Cross Street or Mount Rushmore, let's call it the Landstrom Corridor. I think that there's some potential for some really good mixed-use residential-type development that could happen there, that would be very similar to what we would do on the east side, it's just a very, a much smaller neighborhood, and I think there's some opportunities there. Like I said, I don't think we have to revisit the study to include that area, I'm just saying that whatever actions we take as a zoning planning department, we should maybe adopt within that area as well. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to address the housing one, we're not proposing anywhere to actually demo existing housing to build new housing. We think, based on the amount of land that you have available between Fifth and SD Mines, there is opportunity to build new housing, new, higher-density housing, so like one of the images Graham showed of the potential parking structure at Fifth and St. Joe, potential to do three- or four-story type units, and you could actually get, you know, 60 to 70 units in an acre, so it actually wouldn't be that difficult to get to that 350 level or amount of housing without having to demo any existing housing.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank you folks for putting this document together. I think a second set of eyes coming into any community shows us, sometimes we already know, but it's always nice to have it explained to us, I guess. I have several questions. Number one, the zoning, or not the zoning area, but the area that you initially started with, I understand the corridor of School of Mines to downtown and through there, and I agree with Andy, continuing that out, a little farther is not a bad idea. The area that is in the squared-off place down by West Boulevard and South Street, I'm curious to know why you included that corner right there, I mean, maybe it's just a squared-off to show a section, but that farthest left-hand corner at the bottom, I mean, there's houses there on West Boulevard, and I just, I was just curious to know why you included that in the boundary to start with.
So, I can, I can tell you why we think it's a good idea to include that area in the boundary. I think the boundary was set at the beginning for a lot of different reasons. From my perspective, the inclusion of that is the inclusion of that neighborhood and its direct connectivity and impact to and from downtown. And so, what we've tried to do, if you look at some of the different strategies in here, in particular, the one with regard to place type, we've identified a neighborhood place type, and that's what a lot of that southern boundary is. And so, the primary use that we've defined within that place type is residential.
Right.
And so, within certain cases, in certain settings within that neighborhood, there may be more density appropriate for residential, and even on, if you took maybe Mount Rushmore and Quincy, maybe that's appropriate for some, a small amount of commercial there. So what we tried to do was be really, really highlight the connectivity of that neighborhood and the importance of that neighborhood, and even further points to the south, I think one of the reasons, even JJ mentioned, the reason we don't go further south as we move to the east is because of the topography and things, and it just becomes a challenge to connect those areas. But in that case in particular, for me, it was the neighborhood connectivity and being able to make sure that those relate to one another.
Okay, thank you. I think for downtown, one of the things that is, the best challenge is that Omaha Street, because people do come through, and I know a lot of towns you drive right through Main Street, and here you really don't, and I, I'm not sure how to address that, I mean, I know you have some ideas on corridors that go forward north, but if there's any other ways that you can think of that, other than having a bridge over the street, which obviously we've talked about, and tunnels and, you know, it just, it's just a tough area to go through, but I think anything that we can do to enhance that connectivity between downtown and the Journey Museum, for instance, is a real plus.
Yeah, and we did, we think what you've done at Sixth is incredible, and I know I've heard that it took three times to improve that crossing. What you have out there today is what I think is the best solution for an at-grade solution. It is a really nice intersection, the timing is spaced out, I walk really fast, but even for folks that don't walk very fast or in a wheelchair or on crutches, because you have that wide median in the center, people can actually feel comfortable, even if they can only make it halfway across the street, there's a nice big, what we call pedestrian refuge for somebody to wait until the traffic signal changes again. We think that you could emulate that type of crossing in several locations, and the plan details that out. We even pointed out an opportunity at Third, even though the street doesn't continue north of Omaha, that is a, could be and is a critical pedestrian connection to get to the Rapid Creek Trail. There's not many, many locations east of Fifth where you can actually get to Rapid Creek, so we think doing some major improvements at that third intersection could help as well.
Yeah, that and East Boulevard.
And East Boulevard was another one. When you look at the details in the plan, those three intersections are identified.
Okay, the other question, not a question, I guess, but the other comment is something that John also brought up, and it's about the changing the lanes to two lanes and those kinds of things. I know we try to be creative in how, the best way to get people from east to west and back and forth to homes on the west side, and my comment, I guess, is, you had several suggestions about street changes, making it a two-lane, doing some kind of back-end parking, which, that would take me a long time to figure out how to do that, and having maybe even a two-way street. My thought is, once you narrow down Main Street, St. Joe, those to two lanes, all the people are going to go to Omaha, because that's just natural, and that's kind of where you probably want them.
Yes.
But, just looking at how West, or Eight Streets, things have had changes, you know, because we're making those constructions areas there, everybody goes to West Boulevard, and it just pushes the problem somewhere else, I guess, and I know that we've had discussions in the past about widening Omaha Street, and that even makes it even more hard for people to come into downtown. So, I'm not saying that two-lane streets are bad, it's just that's a concern that I would have, and if you did a two-way, I don't know how you do that when you get to Halle Park for sure, but I, I mean, anything can happen, but...
Can I make one comment on that?
Yeah.
Because I think it's, we're not, we're not trying to, we're not trying to move the problem, what we're trying to do is, and you've already got a great destination within your downtown, we're trying to create more of those and create an environment and a traffic pattern where the through traffic that doesn't want to stop in downtown goes around.
Distributing.
And the people that want to come downtown and access those destinations, it's not difficult for them to do that. We, you know, we've watched those streets quite a few times when we've been here, and we've had the anecdote thrown at us several times that, as long as you drive 35, I think it's 35 miles an hour, which is maybe more than it's posted, as long as you stay at that speed, you can just zip right through downtown and never even have to let off the gas. And so, that's, I don't think that's the downtown you want.
No.
And so, that's what we're trying to fix, is how do you create the destinations and make them easily accessible for those that want to come here, and the people that are going around, let them go around.
Yeah, and I understand the premise, it's just that it's, it will cause some other things to happen, and that's just something that we'd have to deal with, I guess, when we decide to do that.
Which is why we recommend doing a pilot project, versus going out there and doing this. It needs to be studied and look at all the details on how that works.
Sure. The last comment I had or question is, the design guidelines that you've provided in the document, and I think some of those are excellent, and we've seen some of those things before when we did Historic Preservation, did a design guideline study, and I think they all fit well. My question is, did other people comment on that, or is that something that has just come up? I wanted to know how you came up to that.
Yeah, we've gone through several iterations of those, with a small committee, and then I think the last public meeting, they were also presented briefly, and then also on a board for people to review and look at. So, those have been, I would say thoroughly vetted, but again, it's coming to you all now, and your chance to respond to those as well.
Sure. That's the only comments I have for now, thank you.
I just want to add to what Graham said, the, out of everything in this plan, we have, in the last month in drafting this document, we have spent the most amount of time on the zoning and design guideline section, so yeah, it has been thoroughly vetted through your staff, and there are still some elements that have come up that we need to look at over the next month to make sure that the language is perfect, but yeah, it has had a lot of, a lot of review and a lot of vetting.
Yeah, and these open houses are intended to get more comment back on those, and then going through this adoption process.
Jim?
My question is really for staff, so we talked, just talked about changing the zoning, especially east of Fifth Street. What's the timeframe on the city of actually actively making zoning changes?
I, this is Sarah Hansel, Long Range Planning. Ideally, as soon as we're able to, some factors that would go into that would be, the director position is currently open, so we'll want to ensure that the new director who's coming in is kind of fully up to speed and taking a look at the zoning recommendations, and then we will be working on these in-house too, so it'll, it'll kind of just depend, but ideally, as soon as we're able to.
Galen?
Thank you. Just put my two cents in here, I'll be pretty quick, hopefully, but as an alumnus of the School of Mines about a decade ago, I do appreciate the linkages that we're proposing here between the School of Mines and downtown. Again, from when I started there, it did feel like we were very isolated in that there weren't businesses that we felt comfortable walking to or that sort of thing, so we found ourselves driving, you know, to different parts of town for activities and meals and that sort of thing. So, that is encouraging to see, and I'm hoping to see these zoning changes come through in the Innovation District, just to open up some more, you know, possibilities for restaurants and housing and commercial spaces, so I am very excited about that. And along those same lines, the bike lane improvements along Kansas City Street, I think is a great idea, that would really connect the School of Mines. Again, Kansas City Street is a major throughfare for School of Mines students, I traveled all the time, you know, when I was on campus, so those are some very important things I think we should, we should work on. And then, I guess I'll, again, reiterate the, another pushback against the two lanes on St. Joe and Main. I think we do need to study that from, you know, our traffic engineering perspective, and that we're, we only have six lanes if you add up, you know, Omaha and the main St. Joe, so if we're reducing from six lanes to five lanes, I think that does put a major stress on our through traffic, especially during winter months when there are no other options. So, let me think, I think that's about it, you know, we, oh, I guess along those lines, we have had some recent pilot studies on two lanes with, in the form of construction on Fifth and Main, and that really had some negative impacts, I guess, from my perspective, in that we, it really increased the time we had to wait during the traffic lights and screwed up the timing, so I don't think those pilot studies went particularly well, in my opinion. That, that's all I had.
Thank you, Galen. Lynda?
I was really excited about the lighting, because I think lighting has been an issue for a while in our downtown area, and I think it improves the safety, and I think then it shows the beauty in the evening, and I think that's really important.
Thanks, Lynda. I do have some speaker request forms too here, Jean Kessloff? Yeah, Pat, go for it.
My name is Pat Roseland. I live at 1318 West Boulevard, and my concern is, why wasn't West Boulevard Historic Preservation, or the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association being a part of this plan since it affects us tremendously? I know it's been hit and miss with open houses and stuff, but nothing really came across as taking six blocks of the West Boulevard Historic District, where most of those homes, there's 60 structures in that area that are contributing to the historic district, and most of those are private homes, and I think there should be more study done, more open houses, or more, as a group with that area, to get people's input on this, because a lot of people, I walk down the street, and they don't even know what's going on, and they live in that area. And I think it's, this is the first major encroachment in 40 years of the West Boulevard Historic District, and that's why we started this historic district, is prevent encroachment into the historic area. It's probably the most primo place to live in Rapid City at this point. It's close to downtown, which is great, it's close to the hospital where I work, it's close to everywhere, you can walk anywhere, and I just hate to see this with, being, what's happening is totally gray of what's going to be happening to that area, you know. You said that, well, it could be some little higher-density areas in that area, but I really feel that we need a lot more study on this, a lot more public input, especially in the historic district, and maybe get Historic Rapid City involved, West Boulevard Neighborhood Association involved, to get really good input on this, rather than just throwing it, kind of putting it down our throats and say, well, this is the way it's going to be. And also, I'm glad to see that you've got Journey Museum involved in this now, where I think it should be involved in this downtown plan, since it's a major tourist, major, it's historic, it gives the history of Rapid City right in that one building. So, I appreciate your work, and I appreciate you guys, and I just thank you for letting me visit today. Come on up.
Thank you, Dan. Gene, would you like to follow?
Gene Kestloff, I live in the Historic District. The downtown master plan is an important document to the future of Rapid City's development, and for the most part, it is good. It addresses East of Fifth and the connection to the School of Mines, an area I think that has been largely forgotten. I want to thank the East of Fifth Group for being the first to realize the importance of this area and the part it played in our history. It is where the capital building of our county was built, and although we don't know exactly why, the city grew to the west instead of the east. The shakers and movers would build their homes in an area called West Boulevard. The tree-lined street would become a unique place, but is more than just the Queen Anne's and Tudor's that line the Boulevard. It is also the side streets filled with the vernacular structures and bungalows and craftsmen's that are the houses of the workers that built our city. In fact, studying the area on Quincy, there is a house that was built in 1878, and it's still a viable house today. The threat of commercial encroachment and the formation of the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association resulted in the area being listed on the National Register of Historic Places, and the city council and the city at that time realized the importance of this area to our city's history. It seems that the excitement of creating a plan to keep downtown Rapid City a viable and healthy place, the temptation to include the northeast portion of the district for development was too hard to resist. After all, everyone wants to live here. We have been told over and over again that this will not affect the historic district. How can it not? A non-contributing structure could potentially be torn down or remodeled into multifamily housing, or a coffee shop, or even a small retail store, and in the process, the very thing that makes the historic district what it was in the first place would be taken away, and you take away its history. The expansion needs to respect the West Boulevard Historic District boundaries, and the district needs to remain separate and not absorbed into what is being the downtown core district. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Bill Kestloff?
It's still morning, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still, it's still early. Most of you who know me know I'm not a morning person. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Bill Kestloff. I'm a past president in West Boulevard Historic District and past ex-official member of the Historic Preservation Commission. I have a lot of comments here, but, and I will be visiting more with Puma, Denver Broncos, Kansas City Royals, yeah, et cetera, et cetera, later on today, but to the point is that we have two historic districts, Historic Downtown and West Boulevard Historic District. Each of them already have design guidelines, because each of them are on the state and national register. They're called the Secretary of Interior Standards. So, the design guidelines here that have been mentioned are inappropriate for the two historic districts, and they are in conflict with each other. I think the greatest asset of our community is all the volunteers, including yourself, from the Elks Lodge, the Planning Commission, to all the boards. Well, there has been volunteers that have served to preserve and protect the historic districts for 35 to 40 years. So, the blatant problem with Puma's design is the commercial encroachment, like Pat mentioned, into the residential historic district. I really believe that the stakeholders of this district deserve more respect than that, and I hope that this can be vetted out. If I was to make a suggestion today, it would be to change the boundary line. What has not been said is that there's two basic districts in this master plan, Innovative District, and they keep referring to downtown, but the downtown core district comes all the way over to West Boulevard. Now, that's the problem with the master plan. I think the guys have done a great job with traffic, bike pass, lighting, the linkage between School of Mines and Fifth Street is wonderful. But it needs to be said, and what could happen, all the way over to West Boulevard is basically, without going into a lot of detail, and I can, is the mixed uses that will come into West Boulevard Historic District. As Gene said, retail shops, convenience stores, all these things are possible to The stakeholders of the historic district have put a lot of money into their homes. They've put a lot of dollars into their homes. There's a lot of caring and compassion in this district. It's part of our community, it's part of our culture. We don't want to see it encroached. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Jan?
Hi. I live in the Historic District, and I work downtown when I feel like working. And initially, I thought the two-lanes was a ridiculous solution, but thinking about it, the purpose of the downtown square was to have people get out of their cars and walk around, and perhaps that creates a situation where pedestrians and bikers frequent the restaurants and theaters and whatever are downtown more than they would when they can go through. You can't zoom through very fast, it's a 20 mile per hour speed limit there, and the lights are always coordinated to stop you. But I also, as a result of living in the district, received probably 12 invitations to be at presentations of this plan, and to comment on it, and to voice objections or whatever. I didn't notice that the plan encroached upon the West Boulevard Historic District. I'm sure you'll consider that, and it should, you should consider not encroaching on there with any design or retail possibilities, but I didn't, I didn't think you had. So, that was, that was just my comment. I'm willing to try the two-lane, St. Joe and Main Street, and the, and trust you to stay away from encroaching on the historic district, and thank you for the plan, and I move that we acknowledge the receipt of the plan.
All right. Jan made the motion to acknowledge the plan, and Linda seconded that motion. I do have a light up from Darla Drew.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment, although I'm liaison here, I do work with West Boulevard, and the West Boulevard Neighborhood Association has existed for decades, and it's been a very good resource, but with the changing demographics of the area, we see a lot more young families moving in there. So, there's been a resource created called West Boulevard Neighbors on Facebook, so you might be able to reach other younger families, things like that, through that resource, and let them know what's going on. They're not so prone to 10 meetings, you know, but maybe you can just let them know what's going on, what's important, you know, that their boundaries may change, they might not be aware of that. So, that's, that's all I wanted to let you know.
Before we vote, I just want to add my own two cents. The design guidelines and the creation of a body to judge the design guidelines, I guess I would be more in favor of letting the planning staff do that versus adding another step in the path to development. You know, what we, what we're talking about in the big picture with this plan is encouraging people to build, encouraging people to rehab, encouraging people to be downtown, and part of that is to not stack up a number of things in front of them, and, you know, this, my read of this plan is that the design guidelines, I mean, it says specifically in the downtown area that it doesn't replace the historic guidelines in any fashion, that in conflict, the historic guidelines went out. So, you, if you create that board, though, then you have a potential project where you'd have to get through planning, historic, downtown design, you know, add a few more things on there, you know, a few neighborhood complaints, and it's, you know, it's city council as well, and, you know, and that's just, part of the issue in talking to people downtown, the reason why they don't rehab their building, or they're comfortable leaving it as is, is because they don't want to deal with that path, you know? The construction is hard enough, you know, pre-construction shouldn't be as hard as construction, but in some, you know, it's viewed as being harder by some folks. I'm not saying it's right, but perception is an issue. So, that's, I guess that's my big two cents on it. But thank you very much for presenting this. I hope that everybody comes out to the open houses and takes advantage of all the options they have to get their input in while we can.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to mention, to tag along on the open house, so we will be at the Journey Museum today from 10 to 1:00 p.m., open to the public. We're encouraging neighborhoods, residents, everybody to attend those, and then also, there'll be two open houses next week that my colleague will be attending, so we're gathering as much additional public input as we can. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both for your time and your hard work on this.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to look for a vote. All those in favor of acknowledging this draft, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items.
Mr. Chair, Public Work Staff has brought it to my attention that with Kay Ripentrop stepping down from Planning Commission, we are needing an appointment from this commission to the Utility Support Fund and SAB 28 Fund Oversight Committee, and this is a committee that looks at a revolving fund source for development to encourage economic growth. Eric, you're the other planning commissioner that currently sits on that committee, and it only meets upon request, and apparently there aren't too many of those, and so you might be able to fill in a little bit more, but we are looking for someone to volunteer, and then we will need a motion from the rest of you on that volunteer. Thank you.
Karen is volunteering. All those in favor of naming Karen?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, good job, Karen, you got it. Too late. Any other items?
No.
Okay. Jan made the motion to adjourn. I seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Yay. Did you bring this in, Rob?